One, two, one, two?
We need to start... We're waiting for the councillor.
We need to start with the national anthem.
Thereafter, the national anthem was standing, we do then the prayer and meditation. We wouldn't want us to waste time and greet all the people that are here now. Oh, we would like to respect the people that are here now and not waste time. Yes, we'll then ask everybody to rise and then we sing the national anthem. We wouldn't want us to waste time and greet all the people that are here now. Oh, we would like to respect the people that are here now and not waste time. Yes, we'll then ask everybody to rise and then we sing the national anthem.
Africa, Maluka, Isu, Onorayo, Israel, Nijana, Songyezu, Bosi, Sirela, China, Nisafolayo, Murela, Buluka, Sichama, Sa'esu, Mutele, Zelikwalipasweke, Usebuluke, Usebuluke, Sichama, Sa'esu, Sichama, Sa', South Africa, South Africa, Eti, Dofan, Motsenirwa, Eti, Dikya, Fanozi, Uzirbe, Fethbes, Paniklanse, Ampurhe, South Africa, To Come Together and Unite, Enter, We Shall Stand, Let Us Live As Heartful, Africa, In South Africa, I Stand!
Now we're gonna take this opportunity... We're gonna have a three-minute silence prayer. My three minutes is dropped by me. So my three minutes is dropped from here. Thank you. Without a waste of time... Because we're going to give to the councillor to do the welcome, but it's important to introduce ourselves. We are from parliament in the national assembly. From a portfolio committee on communications and digital technologies. So without getting those which will deal with who are welcomed... But let me then take the opportunity to give members of the committee to introduce themselves. So with the parliament in South Africa, you'd know that we are in a multi-party system. So the committees are also constituted along those lines. But we are here today... Not as different parties, but as the committee members of the council. So, like I said, I will give members to introduce themselves. I usually start from the left. It has nothing to do with those that are on the right. I don't want my whip here to whip me after this. Okay, we'll start from...
Sanbonani nonge enlini, ika malami ni ngonomsega, i member yee parliamente wi committee ka communication, gabong.
Malweni, ika malam, gulesiba mlala, a member of this committee.
Good day. My name is Gumbo Thomas. A member of parliament and a member of the committee on communications and digital technologies.
Good morning. My name is Tulo Fellow Bolani. I'm a member of the committee, thank you.
Must we say apologies as well? We would like to pass some apologies that we have. We have some committee members who are not here. We have gotten apology from Honorable Mazoni from the TA who's not with us. We also have an apology from Honorable Majosi from the IFP as people will be knowing that the IFP is also preparing for a funeral. We also have an apology from Honorable Tembo from the EFF who's also joining that program. So I thought we also have, I think that will be the last apology, we also have an apology from Honorable Tembu from the NC who's also in KZ10. Having done so, like I said, we will then get a welcoming from the councillor. Councillor Chachaaza, Ayabonga, the honourable councillor, Ayabonga.
I'm Chachacha, and I'm one of the honourable members of parliament.
I would like to take this opportunity to greet the members of parliament. I'm greeting the youth as well. Greetings to the mothers who are amongst us. I am not gonna be long. I would like to thank the committee. They just come from parliament to come to us today. I am hopeful that we have mostly the youth that are amongst us today. So I am hoping that every young person that is amongst us today is gonna take something out of whatever that is going to be presented here today. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the members of parliament and say to them they are at home here. I would like to tell the youth amongst us that you have the opportunity today to talk to the members of parliament about your problems, our basaries and other problems. They are members of parliament, they will be able to deal with your problems today. I thank you, Chairperson. The councillor is going to make us make mistakes today. Okay, no, we feel welcome. Thank you, Honorable Councillor Chachaza. We really feel at home now. But for other things... Okay, like I said, we are from parliament and I take it that the PCO, the education unit from parliament, has also been engaging with people. You now know that we are to deal with the amendment of the SABPO bill. Now, the fun is again going to be... Now, I would like to mention that... The intention is really not to read for you the clause by clause. But deal with the objectives of this amendment we are talking about. Once we deal with those objectives, you'll then understand how then they are linked in the clause by clause. But because we know when public representatives come before the people... People also see it as an opportunity to raise everything else that they want to raise with parliament or government. So what we do then is not to censor people on what they need to say. But what we do is to try and put those problems according to the departments or the portfolio committees we may need to refer to. But then on general points that are raised which are of parliament in nature, we respond even if they are not talking to the bill. So what it means therefore is that as we approach the bill, which is why we are here... So we'll expect you at least to start from the point of whether that bill is supported or not supported and make your point. You may not need anyway to speak to every clause, but there may be one clause that you would want to talk to to justify your point. I'm also taking it for granted because I see you are carrying papers that you have got the summary of the bill in the language that you prefer, in this case, Tosa or English. in the language that you prefer, in this case, Tosa or English.
Diakoba na, koba ne petela ma pepe, ni fume ne eh, am- am- amakrepu, akata sa yoko bana lomteto, uteta ngadoni, ngoluimi eni kwaziyo, ukuliva, is Tosa kunyisulungu.
So having that, if you look at the objectives of the bill.
Nanjegogo kesenchi lo, ka, uchoanga kuinjongo, zalomteto osa ilwayo.
So the bill seeks to amend the South African Post Office LTD eh- eh, Act 2011, so as to provide for the revised duties and expand on the mandate of the South African Post Office, as provided for in this Act and the Postal Services Act eh, 1998.
Lomteto uyilwayo, ufuna ukulungisumteto we posio Msans Africa, wangoo 2011, ukuzo, kubonelele ngemise benzi shazi wewyo, nogwandi si kunyali posio Msans Africa, njengogo, kubonelele lomteto kunyenomteto we kuduzi posi wangoo 1998.
Repair post, the post office infrastructure, to provide diversified and expanded services and exploit the post office infrastructure capacity to extract value and forge relations with other stakeholders.
Kuchazi wese ko se posi, ukuzo, kubonelele ngenkonzo, ezoshukeneyo, neza ndiswewyo, nokse benzi samanjehese ko, ezingundo o kosi posi, ukuzo, kufunia no kabiso kunyenokwaka obujelwane, na banya bakrapazelika yo.
To provide for the revised governance structure of the South African Post Office.
Kwaye ke, ukusifuna ukubonelela ngobume, obuchazi wewyo bolau lule posio Msans Africa.
To provide for the appointment and functions of the stamp advisor committee.
Ukubonelela ngokai shua kunyenemise benzi e komite, ngibisoze Sambo.
And to provide for matters connected eh, therewith.
Kunyenokubonelela ngimiba, enkulu menenoko.
So that's the objective of the bill.
Ye yo nanjongo, ke yalomteto osa ilwayo layo.
Then when you go through it, you'll then see the clauses that support that objective.
Kana ke, ukubeke ka ufunda apa, kwe- 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 ligripo, uzakbona ke, yo- onge amasoloja, ateta kwa yeye aseka, ezinjongo, uzalomteto osa ilwayo.
For example, in the governance of the post office.
Omse ke, lokulau lule post office.
It talks about the duty of the minister to appoint or remove and the circumstances thereof.
I teta ngomse benzi wompati swa wogo nyula, kunyenokususa, amalungu e bodi, alaulayo.
It also talks about the number of people to be appointed, reduction from ten to nine, so that when you have five, you have got the minimum to proceed and make decisions.
Ikwa teta ke, na ngokushiswa, kwenani la malungu e bodi, lisuke ku- ku- kishumi liye kistoba, ukwenze loko bana ka, kukho amalungu, amaxano ngani sweni, bakuazi ndoba na bangatatisi kribo.
But more importantly, it also talks about how the post office needs to be funded, especially in giving out what they call universal service obligations, which is about servicing rural areas and so on.
Okona konaki, kubalo lekleyo, i teta ngendela eh, i- i- iposi ekufreka, inni kwe ikaswe ngemalinga yo, ukuzi kwazi, ukuzi sinkonzo, kubanti bonke, inga kumbi, kubantu abasalali.
So as you can see, the proposal there, it's about government funding the universal service obligations, so that there are services in rural areas, even if the post office is not benefiting as a company.
Nanjegogo ke ni bona, kukho isoloja eli teta ngendela iposi, ema itraswenga yo gezmali, ukwenze loko bana ma ikwazi, ukuzi sazo nginkonzo, abantu ini inga kumbi, kubantu basalali, na ngona iposi ona mlaambi, iyaobe inga kamuli, we- we- we so sibonelelo.
Now, when you check the expanded mandate and also deriving value in the infrastructure of the post office.
Kasele uchoanga ke, ukasela, eyo na- eyo koba na posi.
To know, eh, by this law amending, to a point that as times change, the post office have been left behind and that's why many of the branches would close, because not all of you now go for a stamp and write the letters that the forefathers used to write to their loved ones, even if they come after six months.
Eh, nanjegogo ke ni sazi, iposi, i- ilaula, imitet- imiteto etile, eh, chinjachi chayo, iyo londo ni bona ngoku, indoko bana, iposi, ay sase benzi njengogo, ya isebenza kala, koba na, abantu abasasi tinga kola shoba besi tinga ngalo, inkonzo za se post office, kuba ngoku, oma mabetu, no- no- tatabetu, abasapalelani, inwa tizotando, batumelele zon.
Eh, no, ibambi le onba, eh, pilenda onkoo, na sasazale, jaze six months, ababa la bapamili, sisto kustali, sias temba gele. Siya sasazale, kutwe valinje besi za ufunda. But today, we are in a digital world, eh, people are using digital platforms that old post office eh, systems, like letters and so on.
Na mlanje, abantu bangoku, basebenzisa, obukaka kaka balimila, abasasebenzi, ngelandaala, ukwensa izindo.
So amendment then seeks to get post office to be able to do what others are doing to be relevant with times.
Lomteto uyilwayo ke, wenze lue indoko bana, iposi, ma ikwazi nayo, ukusa, isebenzise, obukaka bakaka balimila, ukwenze la okoba na, abantu bonke, bazoo ba- bazoo kwazi, ukusebenzi sa, inkonzo za se posi.
So we are talking about also then the e-commerce, the businesses that people want to do, that they can now use the platforms that the post office would have if this becomes the law.
Oku ke, kukuka amashishini, ano kutike akwazi, ukusebenzi sa, inkonzo za se posini, ka lomteto onokuti, ovumwe, ongeniswe, kumeteto yele lomtans Africa.
So ke, before si tato ke, teba ngoba mcha, this is part of the induction.
Before we can have this discussion, eh, councillor.
Ukole, indogutika masizele, people think that the post office is the post bank.
There is a- a notion that eh, people eh, are thinking that the post office is the same as the post bank.
Now, want to clarify that the post bank was once a subsidiary of the post office, but now it stands as a bank and that's why there is a bill that government has done about a state bank.
Ndifunu kutatla salenda uke, i post bank ya ikata, i ngalinye iposi, kotoa ngoku, i post bank ya ya yasuka, ya yipanga ezimeleyo yotwa, ngako okoke, iposi yotwa, ne post bank yotwa.
Kotoa ke, i post bank, eyo nanda wiza isebenzisa, ukwenze libis services za, zia ambena, kla is a state bank, first and foremost, i post office, ngobazizo, ezikficha napapa nbetu balxalakon.
So the post bank eh, uses the post office as the place to- 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 to give services, because the post office is the nearest place for everyone to be able to access this state bank called the po- the post bank.
And then the post bank will have its own ATMs like all other banks.
I post bank ke nayo, isa bano mchinibayo kupimali, njenga sazonke zinipanga.
So which means therefore, i post office becomes a center of most of the services that government can deliver to our people.
Le, eyo etike, iposi yo na, iya kba yo na nanda, inni kingonzo, abantu ini.
So when we talk about eh, this amendment, it's about those things in the main.
Kasiteta ke, nga- nga- ngalomye- ngalomteto uyilwayo, sisa ma okutela kulonda.
Therefore, going forward, the way we are going to make inputs.
Njengogo ke, ukubeke kela pambili, kla sisa okuteta ngalomtrenbi.
Sizo, tela, uba- abantu bazza, bapakamisa izanja.
We will request that people raise their hands.
And then we note about ten hands first.
And we will, and sisa konyula, abantu abaxano kala, abalishumi kala.
Ishumi sisi.
Abalishumi kala.
Okay, so ten names and then, buna bazza ushala kule middle, so that bakuazi uzaku mic.
All right, those ten people are gonna sit here in the middle so that they can be able to access the mic.
Then after the ten people, we will check if there are still others who want to make the input.
Kana ke, beke bile, ababa lishumi bo kala, siza obono ba, bakona na banya, abafuna kakona, ukuzo teta.
And na bosba pointenjalo, kutbeze balxali, eh, umdatole i chance ya ke, yu giha be mic.
Naboki, baye kuseka msekwe, ni bapakamisa izanja, ushala, abo nyule, bapindo kakona bazze, bazza ushala apa, es- espakatin.
But today councillor and your constituency, we are not in a debate of parliament.
Eh, just to make things clear councillor, today, we, as- asisa nga apa, ukuzo kutoka, imitimbi ya se parlament.
But we are here to listen to the people.
Kotoa, sisa apa, ukuzo kumamela abaxali.
Then we will take what we get from the people and have a discussion in parliament and debate it properly.
Sa utige ven ngogo, sitate, yo- onge indwe za bitetiwe apa, sibu ya lemva nayo e parlament.
And as I said before, we know that it gets to be an opportunity for people to vent out on any matter that they want government to know.
Njengogo ke, bendichilo, okoba na, abantu, baye balitate luthuba, ba- ba- bapakamise imitimbi edla umsi.
So ndzamukute, we will not stop you until you are done in your three minutes.
Indo ke, ndizamukete tati, ndoko bana, asiso kukaula, kotoa, akupele imisuzu mitatu, siza kukaula.
So ke, na ndonofunu, yicho- uyicho glamizuzu mitatu naye.
Whatever it is that you want to say, you only have got three minutes.
Niya temu, kutisweli.
I hope that we all understand each other.
So if we do understand each other, we are now going to move to that engagement.
Njengogo ke, sisa kala, tati izanja ke.
So, so tela, abantu kaba za uteta, bapakamise izanja. Then they will then move to the- to the chairs. Eh, those who want to raise their hands, let's get to the chairs. Ni youth mo se, uchiluka, ucanse love. So the young people have understood, so we expect them to chew and raise better than they want to raise. Okay, must we start okon? Eh, mtsambozo, timasabegile eh, sipagama. So you'll then briefly introduce yourself eh, gutungbani, from- from where, maybe what, and then speak for our record. Eh, you- you can then proceed to the mic and speak.
Antate luthuba, se members of se parliament.
I would like this opportunity to greet the members of parliament.
Dibuli se, no luchonuko yo, no mama.
And I would like to greet the youth and eh, the mothers.
Eh, njengoba, u- isteti, besteta sa se parlament, besi chi lo, kuba, unalo ilungele, loku teta, eh, indwa ngapandla kwa, eh, isale.
As the Chairperson has- has indicated that you have every right to address any other issue except for the bill.
Tina apa, ekogo etu edutwa.
Here, ekogo etu.
Sinarepshungu, sizi zayo, amans.
We have a biggest problem of water.
Asina o, amans.
We don't have water.
Kotoa, ke, kuie kuzan, ku- koninjela, kuie kuzan, ngawa basiwafuma ne amans.
But there are ways that eh, we are being helped to be able to get water.
But, na ngona, ikona indjela, yoba si fuma ne amans, kubekoe itrake ezizayo, sizo kanela amans, ema tangini.
But even though there are ways that we are being helped, there are trucks that come to provide us with water.
Kuie kufumanise ke, kuba amansi, asiwafuma ni songe, ngoku basi baninzi.
That water is not enough because there's lots of us in this area.
Si fumanise, kuba ngaje, ngbake singa kange, siwafumanenga, banyi, kufuneka sia ambile, sia watenga. Eh, most of us is students, asina amali, so kufuneka ushala une washing emtaka, kobenzima na amans la wo peg.
And then, most of us. And then most of us eh, find out that we need to go and buy water, even though most of us are students around this area. Now, we stay with eh, dirty clothes, we don't have water to drink.
Eh, siyakela, ke uchoange lomba, uchoange siso, kanga ngoko ninako.
We are requesting that you please, eh, make this a priority as much as you can, engosi, thank you.
Eh, itiga si, si kawla se si lungi, singa kha mbiha kuli. Eh, yeah, let's- let's just correct it before we move further. That eh, yes, we- we will not stop you from speaking, but we have also advised that we start from the point about the bill, if you have no issue with the bill to support, fine, state that, or at least then get to the point you also want to make eh, if it is not about the bill.
Nanga, onkebe seschilo, kapambili, kuba na, siza otata nayo, na ipi, na imiba, ya nisa nayo ngapambili, kotoa, siza oktela kala, o kala, uben- nglo- eh- eh- nglo- nglo- mteto uyilwayo eskala ngao, asiso kunimisa, kotoa, sikala nje, sitela nje, nikale, ngalomba, use, sikhili peswa ona mlanje.
Namdia sbulisela na mlanje, ke, kuba na basse parlament, ikamalam, dunglerato, ifanyam dungseti.
Greetings to all the parliamentary members and everyone else in the house.
Ikamalam, dunglerato, ifanyam guseti.
I am lerato seti.
Namdi vila, kutetwa ke, post office, indo eh, ndino teta ngayoke post office alapetu, twa, akos securities, ukuzo, kukatuwe, eh, ndinjela yoba, abantu, bangetwe, abantaba tal, bayachiliswa youth, bayachiliswa abantu, eh, abab, middle age kubo, ipinde footy, eh, line, ainas du lo, for umtu, or critical, and eh, abawi.
The, I've also heard that eh, we are talking about the eh, the post bill, the post office bill today. I wanted to just make it clear that here in edutwa, the post office does not have eh, provision for the elderly, there are no seats, therefore, there are also no security guards, they are at risk.
Ndeyinto eh, ngangsa, ngamanyamakasha ngalandelelo, eh, gabantaba kuba ze kleyo, bayaho yo, kotoa, not o kongo ba, eh, abantaba sasebenza ngapakati post office bambalwa, so ngamanyamakasha, ukuzo bangetwe, abantu funeki ba wewe ngapakati kobenzima, ke, kuba abapume, ba jongba, abantaba kube ze kleyo, na abantu, abamitiyo, bayaho yo, kala, pamkoba kuhoywa, abanyi, abantu, abanomali.
It is also evident that eh, they are short-staffed at the post office, particularly, they do not help those who are disabled. Eh, they stand in line for a long time, they have to service the people inside the- their post office before they go outside. Eh, it would be advisable that they given eh, consideration and those people are given first eh, attention, particularly eh, pregnant women and the elderly and eh, disabled people.
Shelter is safe for kagneta, na kaka bana ayik, kubost office, ne- 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 ndinjela yoba na kutunyelwe, izindo ya- ya- eh, kwa kubost office, so, inga se ipindi bui, engosi.
There's also a bit of being lack with the post office because May does not go the way it used to in the past. We would love for things to be changed. Thank you.
So, I want to repeat. So that you can be sure you're not going to get it. So telekuti na njengogo abantu bezo tetaa izi indo ezchisebuunzi. Koto shkale kulendwe kuti kukoe bill epamku etu. Le efunu kwenza olichincho ni kulmanga le post office. Shikala paweda ya ikasa yonipile, koto akuna lendwe. Okane, as ikasile bill, si ngibakwa loposa si niti. Right? Klambe sisa tu esu. Si funui ui bamba ngolo shlo kwenzela izi benkumehlu ko kula mithinge bizwa nguteba. Esisa umameli zikala zo zonke zaba shali. Koto asibeklendeti ipili sikonba ya ikasa apa olichincho kufnegalenziewe kwenza le post office ilungele la makresha school. Shikale paya and then kengokunge ne pointe. Benitini klarpa yelondo. My target kafunu betaislungu, tikunsegili message yona, ipakegile ngoba sipapa school.
Abatetelto banti bulale kuye omdo kwayafa namchange. Lo nomefamku yenu bavu iseni ngawa mandela. Ti nombozo omna omni omfitanenge, saukalanje epapustali. Apa wesaloni ya rova otis ya ikasa, obanya si ikasena. And ya kri ngambanandi se abame abamna di ikasa.
I'd like to greet everyone, but my first question is to the chair. He's asked to state whether we support the bill or we oppose the bill. Mine is just to say that I'm in opposition of the bill.
Ti buye genditi umbuzo amuti, dikenda rova stalotangendo soba kukoe indekwazi ATMs. Ngabes ATMs uterangazo, si njengoba beskesana indoktwa yin, si 350 on that time. Besisup, 350 besismanachanga bazinjalo kasi kupimali besifma napana. Telebozo bayo ngubanga baza bakonifis esabakona, wes ATM esabanasongo.
Chairperson, as you've already stated, that there will be ATMs around once the new bill has been passed. I want to find out, the 350 sustenance that we used to get, will the ATMs charge us any fees when we withdraw from them?
Omni umbuzo amuti, ingaba ya utatitshana ngakanani lendu, yoba bekona ATM epaposin.
The next question is, how long is this going to take? When will the ATMs get here? Thank you.
Oh, i bill yonandi evuma just because i zosebenza some technology. So izinda zoguazuka le zefora abantaba talabase lainini, then they.
I would like to greet you all. My name is Noloiiso.
Esona.
Esona. I would like to first off say that I support the bill because they bring advancement for us. We will be able to use technology.
And ge o i technology is faster than i zosebenza ito tumenza pozo balapanzenge ben. I technology just go through information, iknige i data saunayo, so it data ikupi information. So that's easy, fakange indroes ngupayan. And I, kulendwe bill for ATMs easy. ATM is ngarite, but the thing is that, as is eposin, ziza kwenzinga for abantaba tal.
The second thing that I would like to say about the bill is that it is a good move that they are bringing ATMs. But my point about ATMs is that they could bring problems, particularly for the older folk.
Just i i i ATMs, kuzabe kungena umtu e 350. Payana kungena nomtu, abantaba talabakona basebenza ipos for ufumaninkamkamiabo. So uzo kuazuba kwenzeke landenzeke pankinyoba umtomtala kuazutso. Tano zotatit 350 ake, so abuko ubulungo be bez ATM. So, and ke kui kui posti, ya eposya lapa, ungabile i securities. I securities bangapakati, klambe yini minsinga bikono baba.
I find that these ATMs will bring about, will raise the number of crime, the issues of crime. Because when these people go to the ATM, it will be youngsters getting maybe their 350 while the elderly are getting their grants. So this might not work out as it is planned because you'd find that the younger ones would be trying to rob of their money. There could be another way.
I posti lapa, i posti la, i ines los service. Just nufiga umbuzo sixxene zengedwa ngutre ogloke, ekbe nusalgaze stala. Ektaala fane basenzinda kwa ke, umchene basini bakona abantu basheli baya chetapa abanzindo. I security, klambe smanga naseke itinga si uwe yanga kwalondo, abantu bayangena baya puma benzindo abaitanda.
I would also like to reiterate that as the post office is short-staffed, the security people that are on guard are also not able to take charge and make sure that everyone is safe. In addition to that, in addition to that, there are also many other issues that could crop up because of the ATMs. Largely because there is no security. Others stay for long, you get to the bank, the post office at 6:00 and you leave at 3:00. Mostly, these are elderly people. They would be doing other things at home, but they are delayed from doing other things that they would rather be doing because of the long wait at the post office. Thank you. My name is Abongele Deybe from this land of Itujua.
Mani bulis. Dididumelang, didindaa, didimashero. Diyaibona lendu nitetangayo. Sichalo, iposi iia funeka kakuli yona. Because of abazali betu ibenga abo ebbebe tata ukandu vala seposi ngoba. Iposi, dakon midoko kubani noba eraita one rand ito kupaa or zebenza ikatila kon.
The post office is very important. I'm greeting everyone and in all the other official languages. It is important that the post office is here and it brings extra services. Largely, our parents use their post office.
Indoge emnage and ipaulayo ku le posi ala betuja.
What I've noticed with the post office in Itujua?
One. Poor. Imtaga.
It's poor, it's filthy.
Abantabaszebenza ngapakati abakatali.
Those who work at the post office care less about others.
Four. Dikenaboga indo paya, abantu bavoga epsu kukweslali zetu beamba nyau.
I have observed something from our areas here, our rural areas here. People wake up early in the mornings to go to the post office to go and collect their 350 sustenance.
Kulondole ongekele bevoga besfumene, okonzagaala abeldele ni, abesiti uyob. Imali esbonelelo sikacholumente.
If we wake up to get their sustenance we get from government, there is no safety for them.
Yes, we do want the post office to return in its old glory. One, amatagwazana ma opume.
One, the elderly must not be at the post office, must not collect their grants from the post office?
Because abaguazu ksebenza, bati be paya baba belelebe kofifo. Zikona abantu abanet decrees, abano krei 12.
Those who work at the post office who are much older should step down. There are younger people who have degrees, who are qualified, who could be doing the jobs. We would like the youth to be at the post office as workers.
Obani ayvosha i post office as etuja, may be clean? May ben abantu qualified?
If you do restore the post office in Itujua, it has to be at top-notch level, it has to have qualified people.
Kuban ezumzebenzi namchange, ngongo mso kandinesenza lomzebenzo namchange.
Because what you do today, you continue to do again tomorrow.
Sichalo, kwa separamenti, vulani meszebeens.
Chairperson of.
Kufundi kwaslali.
Please open up employment.
Sina azupräsidenti na tukweslali, vulani meszebeens.
Open up job opportunities for people in this area. We are well-educated in this area. We need jobs.
As kuazutola imesebeens, as kuazutola ezmalizpuma yotina, mna andeholi londo le.
I do not get the 350, we don't get this money, some of us don't get it because.
Sina azoye companies ezizezu. Koto ne nanikwazu kupaa imesebeens, nititatanis companies, nikule ni bekebezu.
We have our own registered companies in the area, but you do not bring any job opportunities or business opportunities to our own companies that we've registered.
Kanis kuli sebandaba diala, kanis pamandla, si beke pambi.
Please empower us.
Induani funui kinsela ela ewan, amatagwazana ma wapume posin.
The only thing I want to emphasize is that those who are old workers at the post office should leave and the youth should come in. Thank you. Greetings to the community and all of those who are in the public space. My name is Nomzamo Lukalo. I am also a resident of Itujua in nearby rural areas. I'm overjoyed by your coming here. Because you are here to elevate the services of the post office. Mostly because our children will get job opportunities. In addition, crime rates will be lowered. Because unemployed youth get up to mischief and they treat us badly in the rural areas, especially in the locations we stay in. We've got grandmothers and the elderly who live alone in the villages. They are scared because of our own children. Mostly, I wanted to emphasize. The emphasis I want to place today is that this month has for the elder who collect grants. Because of what has been malfunction with Sasa, they usually get money from the post office? There's an anecdote I would like to share. There's a woman, an older woman, who went to get her money and she could not get it. She was just given a slip and was told to go and collect her money from the Sasa offices. On her way to the offices, she misplaced or lost the slip and ended up not getting her money. Our request is that those, the elderly, should be taken good care of at the post office because they are old and they need the services more than anyone else. The emergence of ATMs that you are talking about will lessen crime and also will hasten the time that people are able to get their money. As the chairperson had already said, I'm grateful for you guys coming here. And I would also now like to point out something else that's been bugging me. There's a problem here in our areas where younger boys start fights amongst themselves in schools. Even though they go to the same school, they will fight amongst each other. Now that this problem has taken place, many boy children have not been able to go to school and write their exams. This then places heaviness on the shoulders of teachers as well as principals within the schools. The crime is beginning to escalate in the area. The police do try to take care, but it seems like it is out of their hands as well. We would like that to be taken into consideration. Thank you so much, Chair and everyone else. Greetings, I am Noguongandevu. I am from the village called Kyuluba Ikwadane. I support the bill completely, more so if they will build a new structure. Because the current structure is small, it would need to be refurbished. The services at Itujua that we would like for you to intervene on is the waiting period. Someone goes to do their, to do their business at the post office. But it takes so long that people have to sleep over or find a place to sleep over in nearby areas. Because the chairperson had said that we could bring up other views and other concerns that we may have. We would like eh for the chairperson to consider infrastructure following the floods. Our roads have eh dilapidated and they need attention. People are now living in shanty structures following the floods. We would like eh the parliamentary members to take, to put, to take that into consideration as well, that people here need proper housing structures. Thank you. Greetings.
My name is Nonyameko Plata. I'm residing at Sofute. Watri. The, in like esna yo apa, eh i bill niya support, yase posin.
Eh firstly, I support the post office bill, but our problem here is? Perhaps couldn't we have two post offices? Because the biggest problem there is that no one is taken care of, no one, no one gets proper services. We would also love that there are benches outside, especially for the elderly to sit on while they are being served. Eh, because others eh relax on, on, on the grass and some on the cement and eh fall asleep there. There's services there, the post office are poor and it is very sloven. Eh, another thing eh when it comes to recruitment and being employed, looking at the eighteen to thirty-five age group. I, we are here, I have never been employed, for example, if I may talk about myself, I've never been part of PSL. My certificates are under the mattress.
Because I'm over thirty-five.
I'm over thirty-five. Eh, that eighteen to thirty-five age gap eh is not working out for us because we are here, we are over thirty-five and we still have the strength to work. Well, if this, the eighteen to thirty-five won't go away, those of us who are over thirty-five, from thirty-five maybe to, to fifty, we are requesting that please find some services for us and maybe support us with something.
Yes. Eh, we? Thank you.
Yabule?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, we are checking if eh there are still those want to speak.
Eh, kusakulu, chairperson.
Thank you so much, Sishalo. Firstly, I would like to say I support the bill. Because the bill is going to bring about change. Because the time is permitting. Oko obana, obukaka kaka balimilha should be the ones that we are using. When we are going to have ATMs, at least that will reduce the number of people who are going to be on the queues. This is the request we have about the post office around the country, especially the ones that are in the rural areas. The post offices are neglected and they are dirty. You will find our parents neglected outside and no one cares about them. We are requesting that the elderly people that are working in the post office, find from the post office and then you bring about the youth so that they can work in the post office. I should mention that we were in the process of closing the post office in this area because it is useless. They only help about five people a day and then the rest of the people will have to go back home with um no help that they have received because there are elderly people that are working in the post office, so it's pointless for us to have the post office if it's going to operate like that. And then we would like to request that the post office that is in Natu next to the royal house, it should be reopened so that it can, it can also operate. And it should also have the, the latest technology so that the people from the rural areas don't need to travel from their places to come to town to be able to get their money. I would like to mention this to the committee, just by the way, we do not have roads in this area. We don't have water. And we have the area called Governambeki, we would like eh you guys to build a school for us there. Thank you so much. It looks like eh there are no other people who would like to speak. I know that there's a saying that when the councillor has spoken, no one else can speak after that.
Greetings, chairperson. And the visitors um in general. We are so grateful that you came here today. My name is Sipokas Isang. The issue that you have brought here today. I would like to support the bill. But I have a request. We would like to request that you improve the services in the post office, especially now that you are going to um install ATMs as well. For an example, now that you are sitting there. If we can go to the post office now. The appearance of eh the post office, it's, it's really questionable and it's worrying us even going inside the office. I would like to request that. There are few um employees in the post office. The, the, the town looks small. But there are lots of areas around um this, this city. People have to wake up so in the morning, about three o'clock and that is a security risk. And they come there and they stand outside, yet the post office only starts operating at eight. As the previous speakers have mentioned, those are elderly people and some are pregnant. And they sleep outside, there are no shelters and there are no chairs for them to sit. There are people that are working in the post office, they seem like they are bored because they've been working there for the longest time. We are requesting the government to please open opportunities for the people that are working at the post office now and then they, so that they can move to other areas and then the young people can come in and work at the post office. Thank you so much.
Just check if eh any of the members on general points, they would want to make a reflection um before we, we get to what we understand to be the response to the bill. The councillor put a cricket. Okay, um, like I said um earlier, we will take notes of everything that has been raised. I think just as a general point, the, the, the services are at two levels.
There is a site where the councillor comes in.
Now, which means other services are municipal services.
Otie, I, I love this energy that the councillor is able to raise the people's points because this means that when he goes to the municipality, he will be able to talk about your issues and not defend the municipality to you.
So, I'm trying to say that eh we've heard the issue about water, the roads, we've noted them. But I also want to say there's commitment from government, from water and sanitation to help in provinces, especially rural provinces. They've been all out to try and deal with the water situation, so it's not only here, but it's a backlog that we are dealing with everywhere. Godwa kikona, I appreciate, there's an appreciation, eh I think it was speaker, um that the students understand the easy plan to give water. However, that plan doesn't take into account the size of the space. That's something that needs to be improved so that they don't have dirty clothes whilst they are eh students here. Eh, le point le, yavandabatala mabambe.
This point of elderly people that um have to be taken out of their jobs.
In fact, I was looking at us as members of parliament first. That, that message is also to us, yes. But you were very specific, it's about the post office. I think those matters would have to, will direct them to the post office. At least the post office accounts to this committee, not the other committees. Eh, I'm saying no matter how you put it, whether you are saying eh, ah, my degrees, zakona, and that, but the message was me to say the young people want opportunities, old people who are supposed to be also making way or retrained and, and so on. But I'm encouraged eh by, eh for hearing this thing that the interventions that government is making in the education, you are saying even in the villages you now have graduates. And so it's a, the second point is that you are also making the point that not all of you want to be employed, but others are trying their best to have businesses, but those businesses need work. I think the leos is a kwa zuku ibamba, even with the PCO, that it's a program you may want to engage in with the small business because the small business is meant to assist businesses like that. And I know good eh the minister who is in the small business is very passionate about small businesses and she happens to come from your province. Eh, I have, there's a program in the PCM, with the PCM municipality, on the small businesses, so you can still do the same yeah embashé.
You going to the ATMs?
I go against city. I go for Nega, oba ibekona, iworkshop lane zwa yo, na small business.
This is why I am saying... Kuzo kufunekindokwaba na, ma libekoni pulo lokufundi sa, abantu ba mashishini asakasa yo.
Oba ifa ma small businesses we tu ebesebeenzaka, we zalali sikuzo. We kufanilbasia kwazoba, la ma small businesses ate tenohulmentoba, nati si ne kapasi itingukuku. Yo kubaba, es services ngazne kabantu kleylali zalakoyo, ba yo kufuneksin.
If the small business were operating properly in the rural areas, we will not be having the problem of influx of people going into the city to try and withdraw their money. They will be able to withdraw their money from the shops that are in the rural areas.
So, oba ohulmentega, ohulmento mamela yo, ohulmento wabantu, melu ba mamela abantu. Jema nati si ne mamelagle bill.
Because it is the government of the people that was elected by the people, they are supposed to be listened to the people as we have listened you when you spoke about this bill.
So, ndiakinsa kubana, asoke si san, koso oba si funezindu, su sonde lapo stala kona, umelu ohulmento mamelu, klasi namandla, nato kuzenza zenza ekile.
So, I am sure that whatever it is that you have spoken about, the government will have to listen to it and they will be able to resolve all these problems.
Jema besentiloke, tonge indo zabanda batala, abapa ipusil. Jema nsichosia kangelana, nati be parlamentengukuku, apa ikali nba, seseba chaso. Kobana ngeli pexa, kutkota si saichonga nepus. Estu nba na yolondo, oba inida, oba ilye ipost office, izo ni ngeija ina workshop environment, ezizindu es kwazi, uku tis ngenzai.
Like I said, we will give priority to the issue of employing young people and be able to remove the elders and take them to other spaces. And we are looking at ourselves as the parliamentary members as we speak and we're thinking that we are also old.
Yeah, I think landoya ma ATMs, na kona fineshit kati se, it's not explained post bank, uku tis oba state bank, esinjani. Now, the reason I'm explaining it is because there's a view it, if you bring ATMs now, vulelababantu, glama abatatelimash.
I want to explain...
Kupinde kubeba ekon indo etwa, uba nga ba ma ATMs zakona, kutu kutichu na zo ezio, zizo naypa.
I'll explain the issue of the post banks and the ATMs. I understand that there's a concern that if we, there will be a concern of the security issue. But at the same time, we are thinking that there will be a decrease in the number of people who will be queuing to the post office.
Na kundzamuti, ma si zame indwe ti technology, ngayo yi kikotwa, siya mkele njenge, enye yenlela zo pukula, inkona zizi abantu.
And the one thing that I'm saying is that we should embrace technology and accept it as the way that will empower and advance the way that we live life.
Kobaba, ifa siyenzile yo ndo, sisa outi, na kule isnayda yo, sishala ngalanga ndo eti, uku zi ibe i right, funeke siyo kuhi shapa, sifugengo treaksin.
Because if we don't do that, that will mean that the old way of doing things, of waking up at 3:00 AM to go and queue at the post, we'll think that it is the best thing to do, yet it's not.
Kabona, keteba, oba we na umchamos na we, kiafanaana, pikoke lulucha, na mande bebe buzimibu zobacha, kakuu. Now, as young people... Uchindema ngisho. Kyoba kukulu, ukubona, abantu abacha, bechuile ngelanga le registration. Kotwa ifa unisa, oba besenzi, baba kwazoo register, bechilinli.
As we can see that even the councilor is young and most people who have asked questions here were young people. So, it will really be sad to see young people on the day of registration and waiting to be registered manually, when they can use their phones to do all of that digitally.
So, nza muti, ma si s'embracer es services, swayonge technology, so that you assist others. Sika ati landwe ti, there's a complaint here that even if you left at 3:00 AM from one village to the post office, the post office will open anyway at 8:00. But you may also not be assisted and sleep a police station or somewhere until the next day to get a service. Can there any service, bunga yenza on your phone?
So, what I'm trying to say is let us embrace the technology because the technology is here to improve and advance our lives.
So, as I close on this point, infunuku tis inizule, we'll take the other grievances, sisi selagumele, sisi sekona, whether it's about crime, the police and all that, we send it to the relevant portfolio. But appreciating that the province may be doing some work also in that regard, so would not ignore that, but we'll take it to those. But for the one that were here, I think all members will agree. The people would support the bill. However, the real cry is that the services we have now do not give that appetite to the people that, yeah, your bill is fine, but it may not give us what we need because you are charging it from the services that you receive now. So, we'll take that back. So that the law is not done for the sake of it, but it must improve the services that go to the people. That's the message we got as I close.
Kandi valake, ndifuna okutakisa indoba na, sufumene kwaye su obambi lumbialezo, kubana eweyona, umtete lo usailo, neyawamkeela, kotwa, ezona zonanga kizunkulu zezi abantu bazetay. Kwayeke, sitatile londo, kwaye su zakubuyela emva, kunyenayo, siyo kuhi kota na basemva, apususuka kona.
Alright, I'm making it a point that, I'm making it a point that I'm sure if the staff would also make announcements because we have people who support us, interpreters, education people, the committee support. So, they've been the ones organizing. So, Keba, I don't want before your swearing in or induction, you are already called for wasteful expenditure that may have been incurred. That is why I'm asking them to make, if there are announcements to be made, so that nothing is lost. Thereafter then, I will close formally.
Ebenefuna kukonda, apa kukumshelazilo, na kubana, akanasona izaziso, azao timshambike, afune uku zeposa, apa kobake, and ifuno kubana, atutayebango, ke ngumnyonyo vu esemcha, abesele emiswa, esunkudlenza matiale, yo krokluso angokubana, umoshé imali.
Mr. Ngoma, Secretary of Committee.
Kosi lala ndoylelaka kulu, nbulisa na kmalungu, we have a lament, ika malam, dingtembingosi, Mr. Ngoma, dingnopa alwe komiti lela, pana mtsanchi, dingnlovis doko, likutzolu ikai. Otlala ke, usazo valani, bulele ayamje ibilula, ben kalutikas vala, kase kvalwa, se simenje, kanga ngutin, nasilale, swalunde la malungu etu apume. Ndenge, kwayo teso ukuma malungu tu, saw kalau kulande lele, saw sebenzi salamiango, unga semva, aspuma. We outumduke, kai puma pana, oba besi, yesani mema, sani kela banamtsanchi, nbe la, pafumanee, indwe kase swale, pamnyango. So, ketsalo, andhas, nobufuna, nsesen diisi, kellele, kwa angokuna. Okay, ben za ukela ke, ndi lande la ikalam, eli ti tembingosi. So, ben za ukelas, valamecho kanga ngutin, ndiseses, bulele la, anduipapa, kuba inselenda unfunsenga ikai. Enze bazetu, tlalo kase vala, ben siline, koga malunga pume, and then si pume netu nga lande. Ben kalanje, svalamecho umzozomni. Ba osbulelo, uku tina mtsanchi, stibanise, okoka la, klenya yasemba, she local municipality, okasbi nitle, college yasekingi inza, FET College. Tiko, wena buyazu, kubana mtsanchi, sobesila, tinabesenge yas, kwa tubuyazu, wena kutu sobesila, pagnelulu, kwaye sobesile na nisikulu. Siya bulela, kengo kutu yense, minya na mtsanchi, tikosoma, nugu tube impumelelo pansi, kwenme, kobeas tronge ne. Bulela, kete ko, ika makasi, Christi ngosi, etu kutiosho tuspekona, esba si puma, angokune zanja, eskuwenzile yo, apu beksuka kwanekay, efsi naba, bakzisile yo, apa, oba sbena, ma mtsanchi, siya kwazoo, kufumanee, ika makasi, Christi ngosi, etu, amen.
Nditatalitubake, ndibulele oba anizile. Nati kuindu es ni ndo, napanaprareta the committee. Nazo kwenze, zinputze, nizenzile, siya bulela na ngomso, si figelele, spelo nse hearing. Na ulande la, kela mi klatango, bisai bekiyo, ngosi.